For the, for the people coming out tonight, we have a public meeting to discuss a memorandum of understanding between the Upper Trichester Board of Commissioners and the Upper Trichester Library. With that said, I'd like to take public comments at this time. Residents may comment during this time by dialing 571-748-4021. Again, the phone number is 571-748-4021. The code to enter is 706-814-986-POUND. Again, the code is 706-814-986-POUND. To unmute your phone, please dial star six. After muting your phone, state your name and your address, then begin your comment. You'll be given two minutes to speak, and you'll be placed back on mute after your comment. Just to remind everybody, tonight is about a memorandum of understanding between the library and Upper Trichester Board of Commissioners, and that's what we'll be taking public comments on tonight with. Thank you. We'll give one more minute, and then we'll move on. Yes, how are you, Wayne? Hello, how are you tonight?
Very well, how are you?
Good. Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yep, Wayne Legato, 1162 Wenrich Drive, West Chester, Pennsylvania, 19382.
Okay, so just, just, just understand, you're not a resident of Upper Trichester, correct?
I am not.
Oh, he's here to answer questions and stuff?
Yes.
Oh, okay, all right. My apologies, I thought you were a citizen calling with a comment.
Hi, Wayne.
Hello.
All right, it's been two minutes, we really haven't received any public phone calls. So with that, I'd like to move on with our presentation. So as I said earlier tonight, we're here to discuss the potential terms for a memorandum of understanding with the library board in reference to potential lease of the Kingsman Park property as a location for a library. So with that said, I'd like to move on and have the library make any comments to the Board of Commissioners that they might have.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners, Township Manager George Needles, and all guests. We have to do some arrangements.
Dawn, the best thing, the best thing to do is to use the microphone in order for everybody to hear, and if you want to pull your mask down to speak, I have no problem with that.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners, Township Manager George Needles, Solicitor Michael Piers, and all guests. The library has some information and some questions that need to be fulfilled, one for the completion of the R-CAP, which expires next week, March 31st. This is, I don't know which way you want me to turn, just so they can see, okay. So first and foremost, we are filling out this R-CAP, and it's quite lengthy, and there's a lot of information that they are looking for. One of the very first items that they are looking for is the 99-year lease of the land on Kingsman. They need a letter or a statement as such that we would, that the township will give the Upper Trichester Library a one-year lease for a dollar a year for 99 years. The, once again, the R-CAP is due March 31st. They're also asking for the township for the deed for the land on Kingsman Road. That's also a requirement for the R-CAP application. Other than that, we are looking to see if with the new library building on Kingsman Road, will the township maintain the lawn and parking lots throughout the year? Will the township maintain snow removal, salted paths, et cetera? Will the township inspector be the general contractor for the new building? Will this be part of the Recreation Department or another department? And will the township please expunge all permits, inspections, and professional fees? I have a copy of this, if anybody wants a copy to actually look at it, I have it, okay?
Dawn, I'd like a copy, please, thank you.
Yes, absolutely. I don't think we're asking very much at this point, we're trying to be very generous, we're trying to make it easy, but, you know, we just, we just want to make this happen, and we don't want to have any roadblocks. I think that the township would be, you have a wonderful feeling knowing that this group of township managers here would be able to open up a library during your tenure here at the Upper Trichester Township, and we feel that this is something very much needed. We, one thing I do want to tell you is that Kennett's, Kennett Square has just applied for the R-CAP, and they got, what, four million? They got $4 million, but they are building an $18 million, $18 million library. We're only looking around four million for ours. Theirs is, how many? 28,000 square feet, we're only looking at 8,400 square feet. This is something absolutely needed in every township, in every big city. We haven't had, well, we have one now, but it would be great to have our own standalone library for the community and for the people that deserve it and need it. And this would be something that this, this set of township commissioners would be able to achieve for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else from the library board like to come up and speak? All right. If not, we'll move on to Commissioners' comments, and if the Board would, would, would please so, I would like to go first. So I know we've been talking quite some time about building a new library in Upper Trichester Township, and, you know, there's a difference between a need and a want. So I'm not too sure whether or not we've actually vetted out that process yet. So I know that there's people in the library that would absolutely love a library because they believe that it is needed, and, you know, there's residents in the library who feel that there is no need for one also. So I think one of the steps that the library should, should be taken is to hire a consultant to provide, to provide a proof study that the township needs a larger library facility. The only example that I, that I can give towards hiring a consultant is the three fire companies. I know there was members of the fire companies that wanted to consolidate and members that, that, that did not. So we worked with the fire companies, they hired a consultant, and they proved that there was a need to actually, to actually consolidate. So I think that's one step that we need to take in this memorandum of understanding. The other two items that I spoke about previously, the last time the library came, was the cost of, was, was an actual cost for the library and the operating cost. Now today, I still believe that we don't have any hard numbers of how much a new library will cost, the, will, will, will cost to be built, nor I don't think there's really a clear path forward of how the money is going to be raised. I understand that you're going to be applying for grants, and you need to, and your position is that you need a commitment from the library in order to apply for grants. The other is the operating cost. Again, when you came in, I questioned the numbers for the operating costs. You know, I still believe that we need to work out those numbers also to be applied to this memorandum of understanding. I just don't think there's any path, I don't think there's any clear path forward of how the operating costs are going to be raised. Going into a larger facility is going to mean a larger budget. So, you know, those are, those are things that need to be put in this memorandum if the Board so decides to choose to move forward. I'm on the fence, and until these points are proven, I don't know if I can get behind us. I have, I think a library will be well-served if there's a need for it in the township, and that's where I stand. So, any other Commissioners would like to go? Well, we'll go with our Vice Chairman, and then we'll go with Nicole Whitaker, and then we'll wrap up with Joe and Ed.
Thank you. I've been pretty much on board with everything that's been presented to us so far. I mean, yous are going to raise the money and be self-sufficient once the building's done and you're up and running. Just some of the things tonight that I seen for the first time, you know, us maintaining snow removal and all that. I just got to defend the high-end sanitation guys a little bit. If, if we can fit it in, if we can handle it, I don't have a problem with it, but I like to see how much it is before we commit. You know what I mean? Well, I mean, if you're going to have, you know, another 100-foot of sidewalk or something, you know what I mean? Well, definitely, I agree to work with yous, but, you know, we might have to share some of that, you know, that's all. You know what I mean? Them guys got a lot to do already, we killed them. I, I just got to defend them, you know what I mean? But I'm sure we could work something out. I mean, we, I just don't know about committing 100% to all that. That's, that's my only concern.
Commissioner Whitaker?
All right, good evening, everyone, thank you. My comments are pretty consistent in that I, I do believe there is a need for a library, a standalone library. The location that, that the library is currently in, we have outgrown that space. I do believe that we should look at a facility that is less expensive, right? So if we go with the, the style of more of a residential look, I think we need to be conservative in, in our approach to, to this. I would also, I also think that the consultant, I know we received a call from a consultant that was more of a guiding, a guide, which I didn't agree with at all. It's definitely not what we need. You need, we need someone that is on board 100%, you know, full-time, this is, this is their job. All of us that are on the library board have full-time jobs, and we are giving, as, you know, most of us, I should say, have full-time jobs, and we're giving of time as we, as we can, right? Or as a, as a deadline approaches. We need somebody that's going to be the guiding force to make sure that we are meeting guidelines that are set so that, you know, we are achieving, right? So if we set up guidelines or milestones, so to speak, milestones, when we hit certain milestones, we need someone that's going to be guiding this project. You know, there was someone that said, oh, you know, I'm not really in favor of consultants, but we need someone, right? You need someone, and that is called a consultant. That person is hired to make sure that we have a feasibility study done. One of the first things that Pam said was, you have to show that there's a need for a library in the community, that's your first thing. Once you show the need, then you go after the funds. People that want to give to libraries, that want to give to, you know, organizations like libraries, you show the need, then the money comes. So we have to do that. We're, we are, you know, right now, in this, in, in, we want a library, we want a library, we're applying for this grant, which I think is great. You know, is the Board going to sign the lease or sign something so that we, so that you can apply for it? I think that's the question tonight. But there's a bigger picture. There's a structure, there's a plan, we have to get, we have to put something in place so that we are following and meeting those milestones. Otherwise, we're just going to be meeting and talking with no direction, and we're going to be here year after year. That, that's my only concern, but as you know, I am in favor, you know, and we, in favor of the location that's been selected. I think that will improve that area greatly, it'll be a nice improvement, a nice addition to that, to that area with the playground and the, the library, also community center where people can come for different resources. It's a walkable community, there's sidewalks there, so I think it's a great location, and it would only increase the value of homes in that area and overall in Upper Chi. A library is an asset to any community. So there's only positives that can come from it, but we have to have a plan going forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Whitaker. Commissioner Edward Housky?
Thank you. I do echo some of Commissioner Whitaker's statements. Going through all the paperwork that we've collected throughout the months, I do highly agree, the second recommendation of the building to be more residential-like in that area, also affected is probably going to be a lot less than the, this is my opinion, the miniature Boothon Elementary School, because that's what the other building looks exactly like in my eyes, but the location's great. The library is looking for a commitment from the township for a 99-year lease. This R-CAP grant, is this, how many times a year is this, is it just once a year or every year? Because I have, you're asking for a commitment for the 99-year lease, and I'm looking at your paperwork, and I understand what Mr. Bianco was saying also about the, the curveball was the maintenance of the building and all that, and that was part of the questions we had earlier on was false, of where it's going to maintain this building.
I think we were talking about the grounds, since it's a park, maintenance of the grounds, the snow removal and outside.
Well, I think the park, if the park stays, I mean, there's no doubt that's part of our recreation that we maintain in any way, because it's still the township park, but when you start turning over the skate park or parklot to your building, then it's your responsibility. I'm not, I mean, in my eyes, I mean, that's part of your building, not the park. The initial discussion, the park staying, everything's being brought up towards Chi Avenue. I think it's a great, it's close to your proximity now. It is a lot of work, but I, I have not heard anything tonight to commit on where the other $2 million is coming from still.
The R-CAP will match whatever our budget is for, they will match, and that's why the R-CAP is so important. And actually, quite frankly, the, the, all the libraries in Delaware County have applied for the R-CAP and received money from the R-CAP. That's just, that's, that's free money from Pennsylvania.
But are they part of the Delaware County library system?
Probably so.
Majority of them are.
Yes.
Is Kennett Square part of that system? Well, it's Chester County, Chester County. So where, where, where's your part on, on that, reaching out for the Delaware County? Have you guys reached out?
We can't, and since you guys gave us this property, we can't. They want to see that you've committed to us, and that they, that we can move forward, but they will not, they, that one of their requirements is that you commit to us the property and the lease, so that they see that we're established, and then they will, they will move us forward.
Haven't we done that already?
We can't.
Haven't we committed to that already?
Yes, you have, but I need tonight with something, I need this in writing, so that I can tell everybody, I can tell Delaware County Library Association, I can even finish the R-CAP, we can move on. We can move on. I just wanted to say a few things.
Hold on, Dawn, hold on, hold on.
I'm sorry.
But, but the commit, I mean, you're going to have till next week.
We're almost done with the R-CAP.
Right, but, if you've reached out, what are the other commitments from Delaware County library system that you need to be able to qualify for any kind of money for the Delaware County? I mean, are you going to be guaranteed any money?
This isn't nothing.
That's, yeah, but that's, that's going to be part of your income to maintain this building down the road. If you don't get into it, and you have the building, then if it's 50,000, 100,000, or, that's part of your budget.
I'm sure we will be able to get into it, once we get a commitment and show them that we have this lease that we can move forward on. That's what they want to see, they want to see a commitment from the township as well as us, and, and you can look through your pocket, you can see everything that we put together in our pocket.
I mean, I agree with Nicole and Mike about the, the need, we need, we need that study. It took us a year to get a study from the State for the fire department, and I'm not saying, I'm not putting them in front of you for that, but they, and they're nowhere near that. That's still a five-year process down the road yet, on a consolidation. And it's just, I, I can't, I mean, you need our commitment for, Mr. Pierce, my question would be hypothetically only, if there was an agreement just for a dollar a year for the next five or 99 years, for them to move forward without a study, can we put implement, implements in there that, that you had to have the study to show us the need, or we're jumping too, too far ahead of the game to even get the commitment of the lease until we had the study?
Yeah, I mean, that was, I, I've been listening to this, and I'm not familiar with the, with the R-CAP grant program, I'm not familiar with it. I know that there are different grants for libraries that occur during the course of the year, they come from the state, they're on an annual basis. My, my concern is, is kind of exactly what you were saying, is we're putting the cart before the horse. I think the township has committed or said that, as far as having grounds or having an ability to have a location, that the township has said that this appears to be an appropriate location. To go in and immediately change that to, you're automatically going to get an exclusive 99-year lease for a dollar is a big leap of faith at this stage of the game. That, I, I think that they, you know, the grants that I've seen and the application process is that they don't necessarily need the lease, but they need a letter of intent from the township saying, yes, if they are able to move forward in this type of a scenario, then the township is willing to commit the utilization of this particular land or this particular property. To, to, to jump into and say, right now, tonight, you know, when you've got a deadline of five days to commit to this grant, I, I'm, I'm not totally comfortable with township committing at this point to say, oh, yeah, let's go ahead and give them a 99-year lease for a dollar. I mean, we don't even know what the process is, where the funding is coming from, how this project is going to, to go forward. And I think, you know, at least from my perspective, what I'm hearing is, you know, we're the ones that are being asked to commit to all this, but we don't know what we're committing to. And that's a problem in my mind. I mean, you know, again, I, the, the Board can do what they, what they want or what they feel is appropriate, but I, I just, it, it sounds an awful lot like we have, we're, we're moving forward down a, down a long hill, and we don't know what's at the bottom or how we're getting there.
Dawn, there's another question, I mean, part of this.
Ed, we'll give you one more question, and we'll let Commissioner Neri go.
Okay. On there, it says, on the letter we got tonight about the maintenance and everything, it says, will the township inspector be the general contractor for the new building? What is that?
In most cases, the township inspector is the GC, the general contractor for a building because it's in your township, it's in the public building, and they usually take that position, or we have to hire the general contractor as well. Now, we are 501(c)(3), and... We are 501(c)(3) and can't always pay these, all these extra fees, we're trying to keep our fees down. So most of the time, they do have the inspector be the general contractor, which isn't that big of a job, because he hands off jobs to all the other people, but yes, we're asking for that.
Dawn, so just, but Mike, please, Dawn, this is a public meeting, I need to say, no, the township does not act as a general contractor when the developers come in. We'd never do that, okay?
Other townships have done.
I, well, that's, if they want to take on that risk, they can, but I've never heard of that before. I'm sorry, Mr. Pierce.
No, I mean, that was what I was going to say, I don't know that there would be, in fact, I would be really hesitant, in fact, our engineer, I am sure, is not going to act as a GC with that, with no compensation, they're taking on risk, insurance liabilities. I, I don't think that that's, I would love to see how other townships had their inspectors or their engineers act as a general contractor. I've been doing this for almost 40 years, I've never heard of that, never.
Betsy, can, can we let Commissioner Neri speak first, and then, and then you can comment?
Okay. I, I agree, just because it was the last point that was raised, I agree that the township cannot act as a general contractor because it exposes us to liability, and it's also a conflict of interest for him because he's going to be inspecting things that he basically has responsibility for, you know, as, as an employee. The things I wanted to, to mention, I, I think we could, you know, I think Dawn mentioned that she could, as long as she had a letter indicating that the township was amenable or meddable, however you say that word, to...
Tomato, tomato.
Yes. Agreeing, agreeing that we, in fact, are willing to, to give them a 99-year lease at a dollar a year, and that that can be hammered out into the memorandum of understanding that says if they don't finance it, then the property, then the lease is terminated as a result of the fact that they're not building. Okay, so that was one thing. I will harp back again on the need for financials, both on the, you know, the operating side and the long-term maintenance of the building. One of the things that I've seen, you know, probably because I'm the older member here, is the atrophying of interests in various organizations that I've been involved in. I mean, I look at church, and I see the, the commitment from, from church, that are older folks, you know, yes, there are some young people, but I know the constituency of the library board, and, you know, with all, with all due respect, I think a lot of us are, are older, and, you know, we grew up with libraries, and I think, I think the library general service-type building is needed, I do. But I also need to see, how are we going to fund this going in, in the future? What's, you know, what's our endowment going to be? What's, what are the contingencies to go forward? So that was two. Once again, I do still have concerns about the parking, no matter what the size of the building is, I'm not absolutely certain that there's adequate parking, so I haven't seen any numbers on that with the new design. And I will ask George to grab a copy of the notes for Dawn's thing, I am concerned about the maintenance... I am concerned about the maintenance because it is the first time it's been raised, but I think it can be worked out.
So, um, just to co- just to. Comment back on Commissioner Neary about traffic. I did receive a email from a resident on Kingsman, King, Kingsman Park this week asking me about the library. And there, they had traffic concerns. So let me go back to the initial meeting that we had. There was a item that was excluded from. The estimate. And that item excluded was site work. So site work for me would entail, um. Road improvements, you know, right now, uh, you've gone, you go down Kingsman, it's, it's a one-way road. And, you know, those items would have to be worked out. Through the site portion of the project. And will there be any requirement to develop the road more? So that's, that's, those are additional costs also. You know, for me, until these questions can get answered. You know, I'm very hesitant to move forward. The last thing I want is to build a library. The operating cost not to be there and then the township is left with the empty building. That's why I want the study. To see if there is an actual need for a library. One of my constituents who lives back in that area is sitting in this room tonight. And I'm hoping that she can understand my position. I'm not against the library. It's as Mr. Pierce said, you're asking us to take on a risk. And I want to make sure that we are able to take that risk on.
Do you mind if I just?
I have a question. Go ahead, George.
Yeah, I, I just, I think it was really good that the Kennett Library was brought up. Because I think if you look at Kennett Library Strategic Plan, there's a roadmap there on how to get this done. So, and they started in twenty sixteen exploring the idea of a new library. Uh, in twenty seventeen, they put together funding for a visioning project to sell it to the, to the various communities that they serve. Right, so, so this is getting money to do an action, right? Uh, after that, they, uh, they completed some design work for a building. And then in twenty eighteen, they hired Fairmont Ventures from Philadelphia, PA. To conduct a feasibility study of funding potential for the property. They then brought that, that company on in twenty nineteen to run a capital campaign for them. And in twenty nineteen was when they applied for the R cap grant for the twenty twenty-one funding site. So I, I, I think if you look at like the roadmap of like things, I. I feel like what we're trying to do is that there's a need for money, right? I mean, I think that there's a need for money. And the money is gonna help you get done the studies that are gonna help you get to make, and the. And, and hire the professionals that are gonna get the job done, right? So I really think that, I would suggest taking a look at this and saying like, is it feasible for our library to come up with this? Could we set a fundraising goal for the next six months of a hundred thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars? To hire a consultant to help us proceed forward? I think the R cap grant is premature, to be honest with you. Because if you're looking at the timetables of these projects with the construction date of probably five to six years from now. Before you have the shovel on the ground. You're not gonna want a twenty, uh, uh, you know, an R cap grant that's gonna come in two years and have to keep applying for an extension, an extension, an extension. You're gonna wanna set that R cap grant application up in the, in the timing to where it coincides with. We've got, we're ready to get our money and, and get the, get the shovel on the ground and get going.
So I know. The biggest thing is you guys want a bigger space, right? So, you know, what I'd like to discuss with the board is to see if we can get you a bigger space. So. There's, there's the old goodwill. You know, I would like to talk to the board about maybe if we can see, if we can get that as a larger space for you. You can go in there. You said you wanted to start, um, fingerprinting, passports, coffee shop. Think it'd be a great gauge of you guys going in, into that. May potentially going in there. And showing the board how much money you can actually raise by using those three avenues of revenue that. You, that you proposed to us. And if you can prove that those three avenues of revenue are bringing in substantial money. I, I, I think we can move forward.
I just wanna, um, can I just?
Sure, Betsy.
Go ahead, Betsy.
Yeah, you, yes, go ahead, Betsy.
I just wanna mention that, um, the Heart and Soul. The past three, three years, they've been conducting surveys in the whole township. And, and they have said that people want. Oh, it always comes up, they want a, a new building, a larger facility to accommodate everybody. And it's just what the people want. I mean, I, this is, they're speaking in Heart and Soul. Isn't that part of a redevelopment? In the township redevelopment plan?
Right, Betsy, I understand what you said. I get it. I want a lot of things too. And when I initially started speaking tonight, there's a, you know, I said. There's, there, there's a difference between a need and a want. So that's why I said that we need, I, I, I would advise to do a study to see if there's a need for a larger facility. I'm making you guys an offer to. To try to get you in a, in a larger facility because that's what you need, a larger facility. And I would like to talk to the board about possibly seeing if we can get you into the old Good, the old, uh, Goodwill Building. We've made offers, we made offers in the past. We made an offer to get you into the Community Action Building. We talked about buying the old McKay Schoolhouse building to get you a, a, a larger space. So it's not like I haven't tried before. So, you know, I'm ma- I'm, I'm making this offer. And I can talk to the board about it. Commissioner, I believe you had another comment?
Right, Dawn, um, following up on the, the, the lease. Did you say that they needed a letter stating that we were going to? That the board was in favor and we're gonna commit to, to that, or they need the actual lease agreement? You also mentioned the deed. They need a copy of the township's deed of that property, a piece of land?
So they're asking for a letter slash statement.
Okay.
So that could be, it could be a statement and they are asking for the deed.
Got it.
Okay, she said not right now the deed, but if it goes under the next stage, they'll need the deed. But she, Betsy just said, and she's just worked with somebody this morning about this. And, and, and we're most of the way through it, but there's a pre-application. And then there's the twenty-one-page pre-application, then there's a forty-two-page application. We're just trying to get through the pre-application and they just need a statement, uh, with the ninety-nine or, or with a, a, a dollar a year lease for ninety-nine years. But that's, but that was what I heard down the road. Maybe they can make it fifty and, and, and revisit it or something like that. I don't know. Maybe there's something that you can work out that way. A- a- as far as a consultant, um. You know, we can't afford this. We can't afford a consultant. We had Heart and Soul do this already for us. Um, you know, they've already said that they need a library. I think, you know, the fact that we're turning away people with our programs and we're turning people away on our computers. And, um, that, that should tell you that we, that's a need and not a want. It's not that we want a new library. We would be just as happy as we are if we wanted a library. We need a library. We need, this is a staple in this township and we need a new library. We would put this out for a public bid, so chances are the prices would come down some. This is, you know, we are doing this for the first time. We're librarians and, and, and we're, we're full-time workers. So, you know, it's hard for us to, to, to learn this whole, this whole road. Trip without the help of the township. We need your help. We need your help. We don't need roadblocks. We need you to join with us and help us build a library in your community, our community.
Dawn, I love you, but it, it went from we're going to fully fund the library. I mean, you're, you're, you, it, it went from the library's going to fully fund the project to we can't do it now because we can't afford it.
No, no, that's the consultant. That's the consultant, because we already had Heart and Soul do that already.
Dawn, like, when you go through that Kennett plan, right? The, the, what, what the Heart and Soul is gonna do is they're gonna go out, they're gonna judge the face of the community. What does the community want, right? It's a great thing and it helps us make decisions. But we don't take those decisions and they say, George, we want a movie theater. And then we go and say, how much money is to build a movie theater? We've gotta make a movie theater. We have to then go through the planning stages to determine that that's, that that's appropriate. And to be honest with you, we don't have the professional, uh, expertise to do that either. We contract with consultants who have expertise in those areas. So there, there is value in raising the money to get someone in that can help you achieve your goals. You, it, when you come in and ask us, I agree, the township wants to be a partner. But you have to understand that the township runs a police department, a public works department. Recreation Department, a building code department, a finance department. Right, all these things, as well as all the other avenues that we have out in the community that we need to take care of. So to come in and say, we don't have those resources to give you. I don't have a person here that has, has expertise on building libraries that I can say, Dawn. Here is so-and-so, they built libraries for a living, they do studies, they determine where the money's gonna come from. We typically pay people to do that. And before we pay people to do that, we develop a plan, we go to find where we can achieve, get the money from. Is this something that we can get a grant for? Is it, how can we do that funded? I really think that, that you guys have a great idea. And I think you need a professional to push that idea. And if you can't raise a hundred thousand dollars to be able to get that person to get you that, that money. How can we, how can we assume that there is going to be a, that, that five million dollars to do?
Well, I, I just feel as though, um. We, we just need to work as a group, just like you helped the other departments. I think we need to work as a group as well and, and we need, you know, maybe there's somebody that you guys know that, that would. You know, as a consultant or somebody that, you know. We can't just, you know, pull out the cloud and, and, and pay their price because we don't, we don't know either, but. Um, we've been trying to do this for how many years now? How many years have we been trying to get this library?
I think this Kennett is a good roadmap. It's a very good roadmap to success. I mean, like.
Right, and, and, and in that time, we offered you Community Action. That wasn't good enough. We offered you the McKay School Building.
That was a damaged place. That would, we needed a million dollars just to clean that place up.
No, 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 no. The guy, the, the, the individual that was running it was willing to work with us to get you up and running.
Well, then I didn't know that. I didn't know that.
Dawn, Mike, I don't think it was the Community Action Building.
That was the basement, that was the basement of the Community Action Building.
It's the basement?
Yeah, they want.
Which wouldn't have been handicapped accessible.
No, it would not have worked. So what I was gonna say is, um. And this is questions to Mr. Pierce. Um, is, is there any, since the board has already voted to agree to this piece of property, right? Um, we're meeting today to kind of de, we, we were supposed to be meeting today to talk about the, uh, details for the, um, memorandum of agreement. Because they have been working for the past couple of months on this R cap. Grant and, um, they need a statement from the township. Is that something that we can do if they are successful in getting, um, the R cap? You know, they so, they, they apply for it. I don't know, what is it, thirty, sixty, ninety days? You'll find out if you're, if you are, um, allowed to go to the next step, right? And my thought is, we give them the, the statement. See if they are successful in moving forward in the application process with the R cap. And we have some agreements, um. In place, because if you do get the R cap grant and it's for two million dollars, you still need to raise the other two million dollars, right? Or you have some, some in-kind gifts, um, and those things, but. My, my thought is, can we do that? So that they can move forward with the application, right? If they get it, great. If you don't get it, then we're back to square one. But if you get it, we're still, you know, kinda at square one where you can start and do this roadmap. Make this plan while, you know, the state is, is making a decision on that grant. Because we have essentially agreed. So to not put a roadblock in the way of, of the possibility of getting this grant and being successful with the grant. Can we give them that and then say, okay, we still need to work on these other things? Because Dawn, as you said, we've been doing this for years and we've been doing it for years spinning our wheels. Because you don't have somebody that's in charge, leading this project. So when George says, we need to get a consultant, or when I say, we do, we do. And, and, and I, we don't have the money is not an excuse. If we're gonna raise money for the library, that needs to be a part of it because we definitely need someone. A company that's going to be a guiding, a guide, provide guidance for, for us. Unless there's someone else. We need that person, right? So my question is, can we give them? You know, the letter, right? Because we verbalize it, but can we give them a letter so that at least they can go ahead? And apply for the R cap grant?
What, what exactly are they applying for? What is the, how much are they applying for? What, what is the criteria for the grant? What, what were they, are they providing?
So Betsy, can you provide that?
Stones, I mean, I, I, that's what I, I'm having a tough time saying yes, no, or maybe.
Right, because Mr. Pierce is not familiar with the R cap grant, as he stated earlier. Betsy, would you, um, give some historical context and or George as far as the R cap? Because again, all the libraries apply for that and are typically awarded that. You have to have your state reps and your, um, and your state senator approve that. Um, you have to get letters from them for this process as well. I know, um, before, um, Horar retired. You know, he was, you know, in favor and, um, was going to do this process, but go ahead, Betsy.
Uh, well, the R cap is, um, a state grant. Uh, Upper Chichester Library cannot, uh, apply to it because we are not, uh, funded by the state or part of the county system. So we cannot get the Keystone Library Grant. So this is why we're going after the R cap. It's called.
And what does the R cap mean?
Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Project. And it's, uh, with the governor, um, the governor and the budget, um. Department with the state. They open up once a year for thirty days. Uh, it's called the pre, well, the first stage is the line item, itemization on, um. With the state, with the state budget. And we fit with, uh, I think it was called six-three, you know, a certain itemization number. So the next step is the pre-application window. It opened up. The governor opened it up March first. It closes March thirty-first. So it's, um. It's not as, it's just like the letter for the, um, lease that Nicole's talking about would be helpful. Everything doesn't have to be written in stone. The R cap will fund fifty percent of construction projects mainly. They do, um. They gave four million to, uh, I think it was, uh, you know, Kennett Square. They gave a million to have referred Township Library for their renovation. It has to be, um, more than a million dollars or, or, or more. So we, we have gotten some bids and it seems to be the average cost may be around four million. So the R cap, we're asking for two million, that we would have to get in pledges or loans or whatever. And the other half, the state would pay for a construction project.
I have a question. You probably don't have the answer and you, you, you can maybe ask them. Okay, whatever you get. They'll match. And you're telling me you can use this for construction and stuff?
Yeah, it's, it's for construction.
If you get the grant. Don't match whatever you get every year. Can you build in the stages with it? Now, you go out this year, you get, you know, you say it's gotta be at least a million?
Well.
You get a, you get a bunch of dollars.
I think it's a one-time match.
Yeah, it's a one-time match. So if we are in this pre-application process. Then the next month, there's another thirty days, they decide what they're gonna. Bring us to the next level, which is the application, which is six months. which is six months. And it's like, uh, forty pages.
So you have all this time to raise that money?
Uh, yes.
To try to raise money?
So that's when they need the letters, they need commitments from people. But then after that, then they, um, they vote on, you just, they decide sometime in December of this year whether you're gonna be awarded that money or not.
All right. So whatever you get that first year is what you'll get every year?
No, it's a one ma, it's a one-time match.
I thought you got the money every year.
Construction loan.
Okay.
So they want it to be construction ready. They want you, when you do get the money, they wanna see that you have the land, the bids, uh, that everything is construction ready and then it's go. So that's, I can send you the packet with more information about it.
So, so the question would be, if, if the board does all this and there's all this, you're going to be construction ready in twelve months?
Our, our, um, our architect that we're working with will actually put everything out for a public bid for us. That'll be part of what he's doing for us. Um, he will be helping us get, um, some, I don't wanna say pro bono, but maybe some people that might help, that might help with this. We will have, we use prevailing way, you understand that? And, um-
So I'm not, I'm not worried about those details. So, so construction ready in twelve months? That would also mean that you would have three million dollar additional dollars raised in, in twelve months?
If the, if we get the R-CAP, there's a good possibility.
So you won't find out about the R-CAP until when?
Well, we're, well-
In theory, if you apply in March, when would, when do you think you would apply?
Uh, this is just a pre-application.
Yeah, yeah.
So in a month, probably, um, the end of April, I think, and then-
So what is the plan to raise the three million dollars in twelve months?
Well, it's really two, it's really two million for the match.
So I'm talking, so I, I understand that. Construction, you're gonna have overages, you're gonna have all the planning, planning work, the site work, all that stuff. So, so let's just, let's just theoretically say it doesn't go over the program, right? You'll need, you'll have one million for the R-CAP.
We can possibly get two million.
Two, uh, one, for two million for the R-CAP, so you would need two million additional dollars.
Correct.
So where is the plan, documented plan to say that this is how we're gonna raise two million dollars in twelve months? Where's the documented plan that says, here are all of our milestones leading up to the construction so that we can have a shovel on the ground on December thirty-first, you know, this day? Like that's, that's the kind of stuff that like, so from other R-CAP projects that I've seen, that's the kind of stuff that they're gonna ask me.
It takes- It's gonna take you eighty, you, you, to raise a million dollars in one year, you need to raise eighty-three thousand dollars a month. And, and, and you're telling, you, you, you want me to commit and agree that I have faith that you can raise eighty-three thousand dollars a month?
Make one million?
Yeah. How much have you raised since our, since, since our last meeting?
Hey, Mike, Wayne, are you there?
I am.
Okay. Can you answer, can you help answer this question?
About how much money has been-
I said, no, we can raise a million dollars in, in any year.
Sure.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. He said, sure. So you, so, so you want me to commit and to believe that you can raise eighty-three thousand dollars a, a month on average? If so, I'd like to hire you.
If I, if I can inter, if I can interject, the, you know, the kind of philanthropic people that you're looking for to, to generate this money, it's not a, it's, it's not a time payment type thing. We're looking at both institutional investors and, um, private citizens that have funds that wanna go for, to, that wanna help this kind of a program. So whether it, uh, you know, we're involved in the, the nativity prep in, uh, in, in Wilmington. This, this money comes in chunks, in lumps. It doesn't come in, in, um, uh, incremental pieces. And so, you know, an effort has to be made, but, uh, I, I don't mean to be flip, uh, but at the same time, um, a, a million dollar, a million dollar get over the period of a year for a, um, a valuable asset into a community doesn't seem like a stretch.
Well, there, there's a two million, if you're applying for two million dollars from the R-CAP, there's a two million dollar match, right? So it's not one million dollars, it's two million dollars.
I get that. It's asking if we can raise a million.
Great.
I think it was being almost a facetious question, is like, y, y, you're telling me you're gonna raise two million? What steps have you taken to take, to even be able to raise a million? If you raise a million, it's gonna be eighty-three thousand dollars a month? And where, you know, where, where is the track record for that? Or where, I, I, I think that's what the board is asking at this point.
So, so, you know, just, just numbers guy, that's a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars a month on average to raise two million dollars in one year. Please think about my offer about goodwill, please.
Uh, Mike, let me ask, Mike Pierce, let me ask you a question.
Yes.
We give them the letter of intent.
Yep.
They're gonna work to try to get this R-CAP.
Yep.
They don't get it, it falls through? What risk does the township have? How does it hurt us?
I mean, it would have to be in, in the wording of that letter. I don't necessarily have a problem. I mean, I, other grants that I've seen, they want some type of knowledge. They don't want a pie in the sky, well, we think we can get this particular piece of land or whatever. So if, if the letter is that the township owns this piece of property on Kingsman Road, the library has approached the, the township about the utilization of this particular, uh, piece of land. The township will consider this, you know, the, the land to be utilized by the library and they will work out some type of a lease if they are able to cover the construction costs and the maintenance costs and everything else. The township is in favor of allowing them to utilize. And again, this is just off the top of my head, I'm just trying to, to think through this. I, you know, I, I don't, I don't know if that's gonna be sufficient. I, I, but I, I don't think that the township is in a position right now to say, oh yeah, we're giving you a ninety-nine-year lease. I, I think that would be foregone.
Could that be the, the beginning of the MOU though, Mike?
Yes, yes.
The township grant the lease based on and then go through the-
Uh, that's what I would think.
So I think that if, if you don't, you know, if they move forward the first phase and they get into the second phase, the, the wording needs to say the, the ninety-nine year lease, right? It needs to say that in order for them to be eligible to even apply, okay?
I'm not sure how that would happen, okay.
Okay. Well, if it doesn't, if it doesn't, it doesn't. I, I'm just kinda going off of what, what, um, Betsy and Dawn are saying. If it doesn't, but again, if they don't, if they're not successful in that, um, and they are, they are, you know, basically told that, you know, sorry, but, you know, try again another time, try again next year when the R-CAP window opens up, there's no harm, no foul against, with the township by providing this written statement of what we already agreed to.
Yeah. I, I don't necessarily have a problem with that. And I guess, y, y, you know, and again, I, I don't mean to, to, to be overly negative about this, but when you're applying for these grants, uh, having gone through like Penn Vest Grants and, and a lot of other state grant type scenarios, there, there are a lot, there, there's a whole strategic plan that has to be presented to them about funding, maintenance, a, a, and, and all that. It's not just, hey, we want two million dollars, we think we can build a library for a million dollars. Those are the ones that get weeded out almost immediately. So I think what George was saying is very accurate, is that you, you've got to develop this plan and this scenario before you even go and start to apply for these R-CAP grants. Because you're, you, right now, you talk about spinning wheels? You're gonna be spinning wheels because you're putting all this time and effort into doing that. And again, my experience with other grants, and again, I'm not as familiar with the R-CAP grant, but u, unless you have all that documentation and you have a consultant or a professional that says, yes, this is where we are and this is how we're gonna do it, this is what the financial show, they're not even gonna consider it. They, they will not even consider it because i, it's like, oh yeah, okay, here's two million dollars. You know, knock yourselves out. They're, they're not gonna give that away like that. And you're almost hurting yourself in the future by coming in and not having a full presentation ready and available. But, you know, again, that's your choice. You wanna try it, go ahead. But I, I, I would not be, I, 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 I would not be spending tons and tons of time, energy, money and effort to do that. Because I, I don't think you're, you're in the ballpark of being construction ready within twelve months. That's just my opinion, but.
Well, a lot of these libraries, uh, uh, were in the same predicament as we were at one time. They didn't know if their pledges were coming in, they didn't know if their donations were coming in. They had no idea, but they persevered.
Dawn, let me ask you a question. When did Kennett get their R-CAP grant?
Um, I didn't hear you.
When did Kennett get their R-CAP grant?
They got approved in January.
Right. And they had a five-year process of getting up and ready for that, am I correct?
I, I'm not sure.
Well, I, I think George just went over the timeline.
He might have, he might have, if that's what's-
Okay. So a five-year versus a, for argument's sake, six-month attempt to get a grant? Where do you think the success rate falls?
Well, the thing of it is, is that, you know, nobody wants to donate if you don't have a basis of, of where you're going and what you have. We, we can turn around and say, you know, we have a, a matching with, with an R-CAP. That's free money to us. So, you know, we can tell people-
But that's all part of a strategic plan.
Well, we-
You can't go in with your hands open and your tin cup out and say, give me money for a library. That's not a strategic plan.
Uh, he, here's how I feel. Uh, I had no problem giving them the letter, letting them try to move forward. If they don't get the grant, if, if, if they don't do what they have to to get it, it's on them. It's not because we held them back. You, I mean, I'm not, you know what I mean?
I agree.
Uh, we, we get, there's no backdrop on us, there, nothing happens to us if, if they don't get the grant. Worst-case scenario, we don't lease them the, the ground and it's still ours. We have nothing to lose. The ball will be in their court and that, they're gonna have to perform. I mean, I feel by doing that, we're not holding them back, they can't say, we couldn't get this because the township didn't work with us.
Is, is the letter gonna be the basis of the MOU or are we gonna table the MMU at this point and focus on just getting the, a letter again?
I, I, I didn't realize that we were making a decision tonight on this, on this. I mean, to, to me, this was like trying to come up with an understanding of, of the memorandum of, you know, the operating costs. Is there, is there a real need?
I think anything that would come out of this would be, have to go to the caucus meeting for review and then approval at the board meeting.
They don't have enough time for that.
So, I mean, I mean-
They don't have enough time if they know our decision.
So again, we've already agreed on this. We've already agreed on it.
Correct. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, it's a public meeting that's been advertised.
Correct.
So we could vote on it tonight, we could vote on the letter tonight.
Uh, correct, but again, nobody told me that we were voting on something tonight.
Well, we, we vote on public, on items on public.
I, I, I understand we vote in public meetings and I would have no problem voting on something tonight if I knew we were voting on something.
Yeah, but I don't think any of us knew what the, we knew that we were coming to talk about a memorandum. We didn't know we were coming with a que, we were gonna be asked that question. So none of us knew that that was gonna be, hey, we need this letter by March thirty-first. So we're all kinda in that. But again, it's a public meeting and we, we need the, the letter, they need the letter by next Wednesday, we need to decide on that. And the, the MM, the MMO, excuse me, uh, MMU, we need to, um, we s, we still need to work that out. Because I, I agree with a lot that everyone is saying as far as a plan forward. We still need that.
I would just, uh, just mention that the, the resolution that was passed previously, uh, does say that the Township of Upper Chichester Board of Commissioners agree to this reservation contingent on the memorandum of understanding being approved by both the Township of Upper Chichester Board of Commissioners and the Upper Chichester Library Board that outlines the appropriate financial and operational goals as well as a timeline for construction. And the Board of Commissioners agree that if a mutually approved memorandum of understanding is not approved by both boards, uh, and/or the guidelines of the timelines established in the MOU are not met, the reservation land will be terminated and the use of the property will revert back to its current state as an outdoor park. So I guess my question would be for the solicitor that if there's a, if they, the board decides to take an action on a letter, um, how does that affect this resolution which states that if the, if the library board or the township don't agree to the, the term of the MOU, that the property reverts back to the MOU? If the letter says one thing and then the, the MOU gets voted down by either party, then how, how would we, how would we?
Well, that's, that, the only thing the letter is being utilized for is, is for the application for the R-CAP grant. So, you know, I don't think that that changes the resolution that was there. I don't think that it changes the respective positions in any way. I don't necessarily have a problem with giving them a letter that says, you know, the township has this land available, the township has indicated that they are willing to lease it to the library. The town, you know, the library has indicated a desire to build on this particular land and township, you know, i, i, in the event that, you know, all things being equal and the fundings are there, then, you know, the township is okay with that. But, y, y, you know, I think that's, you know, that's a general enough letter that they wanna make sure that there is ground available and that it can be utilized for the library. And I think that's, you know, that's the resolution that was, that was the, the heart of the resolution that was there, um, that, y, you know, I don't think it changes in it anyway.
So Mike, would you, would we even need a, a motion from the board or, because frankly, I think the letter would just be a summary of the resolution.
Right. Yeah, I don't think we need an additional motion or, or anything at this point. We've already agreed that, 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 you know, assuming that, that everything is worked out, that this land is okay. And I think we could fashion a letter to the, that they can utilize for the grant aspect to, to do that.
The, the, the letter would summarize the resolution and the copy of the resolution would accompany the letter and it would state that the township or the Board of Commissioners have reserved the, the land for the prob, for the use of the public library contingent on, you know, a future memorandum of understanding to be decided at future date.
Yeah, I, I think that that's probably a way we can do that, yes.
Guys. Dawn. I don't see it working out. You're gonna get shot down for it. I hope it works for you. I hope it works. But, you know, for you to say you're gonna, you know, hopefully get two million dollars and then come in to me and say that you can raise two million dollars in, in, in one year, Dawn, I don't see it happening. I'm telling you this as a friend, all right? I'm, you know.
Dawn, with all due respect, Mike, with all due respect, you're a-
No, finish, thank you. Please.
I thought you were finished.
We need to think about the goodwill, all right? Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. Commissioner Neary, please, speak.
I thought you were finished. I apologize for interjecting.
That's okay. I, I, I apologize for my apers, uh, towards you.
Put your, put your mask on while people are in the room and you're speaking and not speaking.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, my son does this professionally. I'm not suggesting, because he works for the universe, for a uni, major university, that it's exactly similar, but as Wayne has suggested, there are people who give this kind of money. I know my son has raised, is currently working on a three million dollar grant. The University of Louisville just received a seven-point-three million dollar grant. These kinds of things are available and I don't think we should denigrate Dawn and her library board's efforts.
I'm not denigrating them, I'm just, just trying to be factual with them, that's all.
Yeah, so-
That's the truth.
So, um, I have to sign off for another meeting that I'm late for, but I wanna just say, um, you know, it's been a long time. I do, do think that, um, and agree, we, we have done a lot of work and, um, I am hopeful and I do think that we will raise the money. Um, we have a lot of people that are- We have a lot of people that are, that are, you know, that are in favor of it, right? One thing that I would say is review the grant again. Let's see, one of the things you said was construction ready. If you find out in December of 2021 that the, that you were awarded the grant, construction ready, what is the timeline of construction ready? What do they give you, right? Is it in 2022 you're building? Do you have two years? Do you have, like, what is the timeline that you have to build? That's important. That's an important piece of information when you're putting the timeline together. And then Dawn, I think that you need to follow up with Wayne. I think C hung up, and he was one of the proponents of consultant. But that's needed, you know, that's needed. And we need to talk about that at the next board meeting, is, that's the path forward for a consultant and, and getting someone hired. Getting someone hired, so, thank you all, thanks.
Night, thank you.
Thank you. So Dawn, I'm going to draft the letter tomorrow and send it to Mike Pierce for review, circulate it to the board, so I would guess that no later than Monday.
Monday, okay. You know, we're just going to persevere. You know, we've persevered for 20 years, we're going to keep on doing it. You know, I've taught my, like, all three lives, perseverance pays off, and it does. But we'll see.
Do we, do we have to adjourn?
Can I have a motion to adjourn? Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.